All right, this time we'll open this school board meeting in the Tippy Valley School Board Trustees with all members present except Mr. Miller. Assistant Superintendent Mr. Boggs, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Conley, Reporting Secretary Justice Mr. Harland, and our student representative. We have one tonight and two next, right? There you go. That's our book. At this time, upcoming board meetings, August the 8th, 2016. Budget Workshop, the Administration Office at 6:30 PM. On September the 12th, 2016, the regular meeting at the Mentone Elementary School at 6:30 PM. October the 10th, 2016, the regular meeting at the Mentone Elementary at 6:30 PM. And on November the 14th, 2016, the regular meeting at Mentone Elementary at 6:30 PM. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Boggs, spotlight on the valley.
Yes, we have several of our new teachers here tonight that we'd like to welcome and introduce to the board. I think we're starting to back row there with Mr. Donald Stone. And Don, if you would introduce yourself, tell us what you're doing for us now, and we'll get about who you are.
Yes, sir. My name's Don Stone. I am the new eighth grade special education teacher at the middle school. I've got my love of life here, Carlin. We have eight children. Most of you probably don't, if you haven't already, I have a retired Marine. So, we're looking forward to coming back home from there. It's like my old school since I'm loving here, so, thanks for having me.
Did you say eight?
Yes, sir, eight. Eight, yes.
She's a very golly woman.
Good for you.
Thanks, sir.
Tina?
I am Tina Berg. I am the new eighth grade math teacher over at the middle school. I teach algebra and pre-algebra. A little bit about me, Mary, I have a son who just graduated high school. And I really have enjoyed the first day in class, but I also like the camaraderie and the community of the field, the community. It's a nice place to be.
Now Tina, you gotta tell these guys where you live, and I wanna see how they able to know where that is.
I live in Grover Town.
Grover Town. That's a little dry.
It's forty-five minutes northwest of the middle school. A little bit dry.
Well, Tina, glad you're here.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Mike. Mike Jones. This is my wife, Lacy, which teaches here at Mentone. This is one of our daughters, and we're not quite as prolific as they are. But I have three others that all attend here at Mentone. And I am the agriculture teacher and FFA advisor.
Well, that is. Actually, you only have four to go.
Are they all, all girls?
One boy.
Still a lot of estrogen.
That's gonna get worse.
And Precious Brenton?
Hi, my name's Precious Brenton. This is my first year teaching. I just graduated from Grace College. I student taught at Whitco, and I really just love the community there and the small-town feel of it. And Tippy Valley was just exactly what I was looking for, so. And I really like dogs.
Glad you're here. Did I miss anybody?
That would be a date as far as... All right, at this time, I...
I'd like to do the second one there, too.
Oh, Tippy Valley names of 2016 distinguished alumni and legacy awards.
And we just named those folks. I asked our Director of Marketing, Public Relations, and Great Writing, Cassie Jensen, to come in and share a little bit with you tonight about that. So, Cassie?
All right, so, we're honoring quite a few people. We're honoring five distinguished alumni, the first being Greg Gifford, the class of seventy-eight. We've got Scott Biddler, the class of eighty-two, Mindy Truex, eighty-three, Tim Dowd, eighty-eight, and Lisa Beer, ninety-six. And we'll also be honoring four, four people with the Legacy Award, the first being Anne Allen, the class of fifty-two, graduated from Akron High School. Tim Harmon, the class of seventy-two at Mentone High School. Lee Norris, the class of forty-seven at Beaver Dam High School. And Norman Wagoner, the class of fifty-five at Tolma High School. And these people have three things in common. They've each lived very successful lives since they graduated. They've contributed substantially to their chosen field of work, and they've provided outstanding service to either our community, our state, or our nation. So, we're going to honor those people with a two-day celebration. On Thursday, September fifteenth, at six-thirty, we're going to have a dinner recognizing, honoring them, to which the community and their families are invited. And then, on induction day, which will be Friday, September sixteenth, they will spend the morning and lunchtime with students, talking with them, and kind of just getting to know them, and sharing a little bit about their lives in the afternoon. Rochester Telephone Company will come in and do an interview with them. And then, in the evening, they'll be introduced at the high school football game and presented with a plaque for their, for their awards.
Thank you, Cassie. That board has gotten out, and papers and so forth, so please, you see? Questions?
Is the, the induction piece, is that a new, is that something new this year?
The Legacy Award.
Legacy Award.
We, we had Don Craig.
Okay.
Our first one. We'd had different people on the way ask, well, why don't you recognize the Akron, and the Mentone, and the Beaver Dam, and the Burkitt, Tolma people? And so, we decided, you know, let's, let's do that. So, we kinda tried it last year, it worked out pretty well, and this year, we had several nominees. Thank you, Cassie. That is it.
That is it?
Yep.
All right, we'll move to item C. Items from the visitors. Do we have any items from the visitors?
They've had a long day today.
They've had a long day.
I think they just resigned.
Don't say that. All right, hearing none, we'll go to item D, approval of the consent agenda. Item one, approve the minutes of the July eleventh, twenty-sixteenth, regular meeting and executive session. Item two, approve the hiring of the following personnel. Michael Jones, agricultural teacher and FFA sponsor at Tippy Valley High School. Tina Berg, mathematics teacher at Tippy Valley Middle School. Donald Stone, special ed teacher at Tippy Valley Middle School. Precious Brenton, mathematics teacher at Tippy Valley Middle School. Wayne Landis, mathematics teacher at Tippy Valley Middle School. April Loving, instructional assistant at Tippy Valley High School. Kathy Roche.
Roche.
Instructional assistant at Tippy Valley High School. Sarah Shepherd, instructional assistant at Mentone Elementary. And Martha Clapp, custodian at Mentone Elementary. Item three, accept the resignation of the following personnel. Kyle Wood, act teacher at Tippy Valley High School. Paula Spolsky, instructional assistant at Tippy Valley High School. Billy Shuril.
Saro.
Tippy Valley Cook at Tippy Valley Middle School. Alicia Rutherford, cook at Mentone Elementary. Andrea Rubisal, fifth grade volleyball, Akron Elementary. And Lucy Oosley, seventh grade volleyball, Tippy Valley Middle School. Item four, approve the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen teaching assignments. Item five, approve the twenty-sixteen, seventeen extracurricular assignments. And item six, approve the twenty-sixteen, seventeenth all-year driver education program. Is there anything the board would like to pull out? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Tom makes a motion.
Tom makes a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there a second?
I'll put the...
Tom, second, so. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of claims and payrolls.
Okay. We have one pre-written claim listing this evening. It's dated July thirty-one, twenty sixteen, in the amount of eight-hundred-six-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Our regular claim listing is dated August eighth, twenty sixteen, in the amount of three-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-six-hundred-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Then, we have two payrolls this evening. The first is dated July eighth, twenty sixteen. It's in the amount of three-hundred-thirty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-eleven dollars and sixty-five cents. The second is dated July twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of three-hundred-twenty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Submit the claims and payroll for approval.
Board, have any questions on the claims and payrolls? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve claims and payrolls as read?
I'll make that motion.
Ryan makes a motion to approve the claims and payrolls as read. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom, second, so. All in favor of the claim, approving the claims and payrolls as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Financial report.
Okay. You have reconciled bank statement, monthly financial report of funds for the July twenty-sixteen. Summary of our receipts and dispersments are, total receipts for all funds, one million two-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand-five-hundred-forty-seven dollars and six cents. Total dispersments for all funds, one million six-hundred-seventy-one-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-six dollars and eleven cents.
Any questions on the financial report? Okay, we'll move to old business. Update on the Akron Elementary School project.
And I believe that Mr. Mitteling is, that's like, there he is. Mr. Mitteling is here tonight to give us an update. Jim, what do you have for us?
Well, to bring you up to date here on the, what we've, progress of this past month. We worked on the areas of B and C, as far as the, all the excavation and backfill. All that has been completed up to like minus ten of the finished floor area. As we build the footings and foundations, we continue to fill around those, bring it up to that level. But we left that area down to make it easier for digging of the footings, so. That's about all we have to do as far as the fill and round the, all units, B, C, and D. We've completed ninety percent of the foundations, mainly just the footings. This time, we have started the walls, poured walls on D. I think we made our first pour today on the east wall. Took it completely from the unit B, east side, third of the corner.
Now, Jim, is D, the, is that the gymnasium?
No, that's B.
Okay. So, it's the next section to the east end?
Yeah, D is the one to the west and north. That's where we're doing the footings. We get unit B, all the footings and foundations down except for the west side of the stage. We're using that to access, get our lifts in that area so we can get up to the high walls. The walls there in B, gym area, they're two, thirty-two feet tall, so it takes a little bit of room to get around there. And I know we're kinda crowded and hurt a little bit, but getting along fine, I think, so. We're about ninety-five percent on unit B there, the foundation, I just mentioned, the west side of that. We've completed the gym slab there on grade. I think maybe you had some pictures of that, but we can look at that here and...
Yeah, I heard that, sir.
That's the only floors we poured was the gym at this time. And they needed to get that poured because they braced the walls off of the floor. They need to brace them high walls. That, that's about half of the floor poured right there that you can see in that picture. That's the south half you're looking at that's poured. You can see the bins cleaned and wired down on the north half of it, so. That was all poured in one day. We started about seven-thirty in the morning, and by twelve-thirty, that floor was done. It set up very fast. We continued with the rough ends for electrical underground stuff, and you can see some up there. Plumbing, the storm drains, this interior, the bearing, which they still have roof drains and sanitary drains throughout the unit B. We did start today on storm in the area between the D and the old building. We still have some rough ends to do on unit B, but that continues on as we, on a daily Masonry has been, is ongoing in B and mostly B at this time. We did complete the water tie-in to the water main that goes around the perimeter of the site. We made a hot tap there, and we got the water into the building, and checked it out today, and it looks good at this time, so. For the next four weeks, we will complete area D foundations, and continue on with unit B slabs. Then, we conclude the boiler room, mechanical room, electrical room, and the kitchen areas. I think there's a cooler and freezer that goes in there, so that whole area will be poured here this, next three or four weeks. Underground electrical is ongoing through that whole area. That's about what we've accomplished then, what will be going on for the next, the next month, so. Have you showed all the pictures there?
I think so.
Thank you. We have some pictures of the completed slab. I think after that second picture, it looks, yeah, that's the gym slab there that's completed. And there's some other pictures there of, taken from the roof, kinda down on the, on the site where you can see a little bit more of unit B.
Did they figure out the, the, the exit stream that they've, they've just done? It was still standing with, with a bit of water?
Yes, there's still about the same amount of water in there, and I think that's where it's gonna be.
They figure out if they're gonna put like something?
I don't know if there's been a decision made or not.
Oh.
Yeah. We have three options that were presented, and I don't know where that's at. Hasn't been a decision made, I don't think. One of them was clay with stone, just riprap stone off through there. Another one was pour a concrete bottom in it. And it seemed like there was a third option, but, but we need to make a decision how we wanna handle that. But it is going to be wet, throughout, you know? So, it'll be hard to mow and hard to maintain, and so, the best thing to do would be fix it so we wouldn't have to mow it. Either stone or chong grade or something like that, so.
Just to let you know, we do have a temporary fence around it right now, so for safety.
Yeah, we did put some fence around it, like to help out for kids to go out and play in the grass area to the north. And we're still use, we have to use that east side parking lot for a while yet till we get that high gym wall done. Just, no other way.
With the kids out there, Jim, you won't be needed anymore. They can supervise.
Yeah. That's probably right.
I'm sure they'll tell them how to do it, won't they?
They were reporting things today to their teachers, because Brandon came in and did a safety talk this morning, and talked about the hard hats and what they needed to look for, and I guess they reported somebody didn't have a number on their hard hat, so they were letting him know.
I heard one little girl was concerned that they were gonna lift up her room and take it away.
Yeah, she was.
They have lots of questions, so. Any other questions?
In the, in the back area there, the, last week, I drove in there, that was this all open, where I could actually drive right through the building site?
It's not now.
Good, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was all secure.
Yeah, it's all fenced in, and we got gates there, they're kinda hard to maintain.
Yeah.
We do have it all fenced off now, or...
Was that during the day?
Yeah, it was during the day. It was one evening, I checked the pivots, and I was coming home, I'll drive in there. I went in, come in the back way there, should I just drove right through the whole, the whole site? And I figured they'd do something before the kids.
Maybe a little axe there during, you know, until school started, but it's all fenced in now, so.
When will some steel start going up, Jim?
There's a little up right now, just what we have to have, and that's on the east side of the stage area. But probably two or three weeks here for any amount of steel comes out, but. The perimeter of unit D is all bearing, so you won't see much steel until you get a place to put the bar joists onto the exterior walls. There won't be much steel going up yet, so.
Were you able to get everybody parked today?
I would. We got parked. We're okay.
Everybody wants to be there early now, right?
We used to be back behind the gym, our current gym, and then behind the cafeteria in there. And then, we kinda went along, we had the cooks, because they get there after the buses drop off and they leave before the buses come again in the evening. So, they parked around the curb kinda, not where the kids were playing, but I was able to get a few cars back there. So, right now, we're okay. If I have a school event during the day or have people come in, it's gonna get tight.
You had an evening event last week?
Yes, we did. It was, we were packed, weren't we? They were parked all down, but they understood. We, I met with parents before I let them go to the classrooms and explain, you know, this is just how we're gonna be for the next year, and they, I just asked them to have patience with us, and soon, we'll have more parking.
So, said...
Every once in a while, we'll have a, one of the community, some people drive in back there and stand, sit there and watch for a little bit, see what's going on, so.
Oh, it is a building.
Yeah.
How many, Jim, how many basins do you have there on a typical day?
There's about, I think, a dozen in that crew, but there's, I got a lot of laborers, but there's a lot of handwork, you know, because we can't really get a lift to every point, so. They gotta put those block at one point, and they gotta distribute them out down the scaffold by hand, so it's, till we get away from there, it's, it's gonna take longer, so. They should finish that south wall this week, up to thirty-two feet, so.
So, there's poured walls and blocked walls?
Yeah.
Is that right? There's both?
The poured walls are all from footing to grade. Block starts, most of it starts at eight inches below finish line, and then it goes down.
And that's typical of building that size? Well, you've had, I said, that's typical of building that size.
Yeah, that, it is, yeah.
If that's the nice weather, I mean, we have that whole lot of...
Some type of core at one hundred elevation, we always say, is, is floor level. So, they have a little ledge there on the outside where the brick actually goes down another eight inches, where, you know, you don't see any concrete around the perimeter, you'll see brick. So, it's got a ledge on the outside. The wall is brick, a little airspace, two inches of styrofoam, and then eight inches of block. On, well, on unit D, it's eight inches. The gym is twelve-inch wide block. Takes two men to handle those things.
I said, you all know...
Fifty-pound bees.
Thanks. Thank you, Jim. You bet. Yep. Okay. All right, go to item two, presentation on the Tippy Valley High School Middle School press box project.
Mr. Conley and Todd Ledham taking the lead on this project, and ask Mr. Conley to give you a lead on what we are.
Mr. Burkhardt's also here, and he's gonna fill in on anything that I forget. We, our committee started this process back on December sixteenth, that was our first meeting, and we're less than two weeks away from kickoff here at, at our location, so we kinda wanna look at where, where we were before, and then where we are right now. So, the, the next slide, you can see the current press box, the obstructed view that the folks inside there had, the no storage in terms of that particular press box. The PA system was very outdated, and it was structurally very worn. We, we definitely got great use out of it, but the, the next slide is where we're at right now, actually, last week, where this is where we were. You can see, first off, looking at the seamless glass in the front, that's, I got some good pictures that we'll show you here. That's, that's a great thing that Miller Construction really wanted to, to do. They felt like it would, it would just be something that Scott Biddler would want, and they went the extra mile to, to set it up that way in there. We are still waiting on the other two pieces of glass on the ends. Those are the coaches' rooms for the, the home team and then the visiting team. We've got the sound system there. You can see the four speakers up there on the corners, and then there are also speakers on the light poles that point towards the opposing side. So, we've got a new, updated system that's, that's just gonna be really nice. And then, we've also got speakers that point out towards the soccer field, too. So, thinking about the, the other thing there, you can see the TV, and then there are five lights that we can turn on that will illuminate that. It's just really gonna look sharp. I know when the electrician set it up, he had turned it on, and, and folks that were, that came in, really commented on how, how nice it looks, so that's a, that's a nice added bonus that they, that they thought of. Like I said, the, the glass for those two windows, it's, it's gonna ship here the end of the week, and it's, it's a, it's a day installation, so we'll, knock on wood, we'll have it in there. So, the, the next slide there, this is, this is where we were before. This was the visiting bleachers. We had the huge hedgerow there of, of trees, and just wanted to make note that the, the cross-country team, this was part of their course running behind the bleachers there. And I tried to take the, the next picture from the same angle there. Just a couple of things to point out. If you see, if you can imagine, there's gonna be a fence that runs from the tree line, and it's gonna run to the bleachers there, there will be an opening behind the, the press box, so cross-country really won't have to alter their course. They'll be able to keep that, because they, they would really have to make a huge adjustment in, in what they would do. And we can also, if vehicles need to get back behind there, that, that can happen. If you, you look at the concrete, you, you see there's kinda two different colors there. There's the worn part, that was where the, the visiting bleachers were, so then, we had to add that, that concrete that's closest to us and that wraps around to, to the other side. So, we, we poured another slab of concrete, and that's where those soccer pit bleachers are located now. And it's just a, it's a really neat situation to, to look at, when you just see how the landscape has changed out there. The, the next slide kinda shows us when, when we were putting this together inside, from the concrete at the bottom there to the concrete flooring at the, at the top, that is nineteen feet. And then, it is stick-built from the, the top there for, for the roof. So, you see, there's, there's fifteen steps, and then a landing, and then fifteen more steps. So, it's, it's good exercise getting up there, but that, that just kinda really shows, you know, the, the size of the, of the building. You know, when you look at it from the parking lot or from the road, you really don't have an appreciation for how large it is until, until you get up there. So, that's, we, we just kinda wanted to show the inside as the construction occurred. This is the, the view of the north end zone, and you, you see the panes there of glass. There's one seam on this area, then there's a, there's another seam that we'll show here in a little bit. One thing that, that we also did this summer, we, we resealed the walkway around the entire football field. We knew that, we needed to do some patchwork in some areas, so people coming around, it'll, it's safe now. This, yeah, that... This, yeah, that picture and this picture both are taken from the second tier inside the press box. So you can see the, the front counter there, where we'll have radio folks on that, on that part. And then this is the south end zone. It, I decided to do both of those just to kind of gain an appreciation for how wide that, that window is. And, and you've got to take two pictures to, to get it in there. The, the next slide is looking out to the soccer field in one of the back rims there. You see across, over towards the bus garage there, you see two poles that have been put up. That's where the soccer scoreboard is going. So we've, we tested the other scoreboard to make sure that it coincides and will work from up there and it transmits down to, to the field. And we will, as soon as D and D can get up and get that hung for the soccer team, they're, they're on schedule, so really changing things out, out there, too. You can see, this is another view from the other window that is on the, on the back of the press box there. So just really changed the landscape of, of that, that area. This kind of gives a good depiction of, of that front counter, and you see the second tier there, that far doorway, that, that will be the valley coaches. They, they will be in there. So that's a, that's a really long counter. I know Sean Miller is, is working up there right now, working on the counter, putting some outlets so we can run electrical through the, the counter down to those receptacles. The, the next slide, this is where, I believe, the newspaper, and this area is carpeted. This was built out of, built out of wood, so they, they wanted to carpet this area. They, they've been working on the paint. That's a, that's metal, metal siding, and then the back wall there is, is wood, where I know Steph, and you see the state champs sign, she's working on some pictures and some sayings that, that they would like to put up there on, on the family's behalf. And you, you get a good idea of the, the next slide of just what that area looks like. That closet is where all the electronics will be stored in terms of the PA, the scoreboard, I think, will probably, the transmitter will probably be stored in there. But that's, that's a nice electrical closet where we can keep everything and we know where it's going to be. I put this picture in here just to talk about a couple of things. You, you see the, the road that will have some access back there to the, the press box for some folks, and that's going to be regulated in terms of who can, who can drive back there. But as you, as you look down there at the, at the end of the road, kind of down by the baseball press box to, to the right of that, there, there was a very wet area that it was pretty, Dwayne, how do you describe it, other than wet?
It was aquatic wire when it rained hard.
It was, there you go. So we took the opportunity to run some drainage. Our, our staff here, the maintenance department here, put a drain in there, and they connected it over to the soccer field, which was the, the closest place that, that worked. So it was a real good situation in terms of addressing that issue, so multiple, multiple things got addressed. The, the storage in this facility is, is great. I mean, you, you see there, I'm taking the picture from the, from the overhead door, but, you know, we're, we're going to be able to really have a place to, for, for things and keep them organized. And you, you see the stairs there. Craig Welding did the, did the handrail for us there. And it's just, I know when we, when Sean, when they get totally finished, he's going to flip those steps, so the, the nice side is up, is my understanding. Right now, they're, they're pretty beat up from the construction and things going up and down, so those will, those will be flipped there. The next picture is just the, the opposite angle there. You, you see the overhead door is from, from both angles. And then, didn't have good light yesterday, but you can see the steel going up there. The, the crew, the steel arrived on Friday, and two semi-truck loads were, were waiting in the parking lot in the morning, and everything was taken apart, and, and the crew is there. They've got a four-man crew that has put up this first part of the structure. An additional crew will be coming on Wednesday, and they'll be working together. It'll pick up a lot of momentum then, putting the seats in, and the stairs and everything, and finishing things, finishing things out with just how, if the weather can cooperate with us. But that's, that's where we're at at this point.
Are those the speakers over there playing all that?
Yes, they are. Yep, you see some pointing over towards the soccer and then towards the, it'll be the visitors' bleachers now, so. We just want to talk about the dedication ceremony. We're looking at halftime of the, of the Culver Military Academy game, and that's Friday to August 19th, and kickoff is 7:30. And then we're going to have an open house the following day in the morning from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So I know Steph Biddler, this, this worked for her and really put a lot of time and dedication into making this a great facility. Do you have any questions?
I'd like to see the open house. You know, people would like to look.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely.
I know I walked up through it Friday, and I talked to Mr. Boggs about it. Why don't we, out of, out of school, get that special steps and the upstairs carpeted? I mean, for one, somebody going trick-or-treating on those stairs going up, they're going to shed some skin on the shins. Carpet that, that's going to help out a lot.
What I think we'd probably like to do is to sit down with Steph Biddler and maybe talk through that with her, to see what, what really she wants us to do. They've kind of taken the lead on the design of the press box. You know, I certainly would not mind seeing that, but I just want to make sure if we do something and it's, they're okay with that.
Right. We'll talk to them. It's a good idea, though.
Is there any handicap accessibility to get up there? I'm thinking of Rita being able to get up there.
Not at this point.
We had that discussion, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rita was on the, Rita was on the project with, with me and Stan and Dwayne and some other folks, and that was one of the concerns. We had, we talked about putting an elevator or some kind of lift, and she's like, has it right now? I don't need it.
Right, okay.
She's thinking if she does, she's thinking of donating one of those.
Oh, chairs.
Putting that up herself. She says, if it gets to the point where I still want to announce and I can't get up the stairs, she goes, I will probably donate to put a chair lift in for me.
Okay. It's just something that.
Yeah, that was something everybody brought up, because we don't want to limit Rita not to be able to.
Right, right.
What is the seating capacity of the new bleachers?
It's comparable to the, the old. It's actually wider, it's not as high, but it is wider, so it's, it's very close.
Our seating capacity as a whole is going to dwarf anybody in the area. Maybe Moorestown still have more seating. But other than that, from.
Well, visitor's side, visitor's side increased tremendously. When they show up, they're going to be looking small compared to.
They're going to be looking like this. Stay wide with both the homes, I don't know.
Right, right.
Maybe they won't see the calls we make.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No. We've got to item three, approval of the revision of the school board policy, the pest control policy.
That's the policy that I brought to you guys last month, that there was a minor revision to the previous policy. We'll bring that back to you this month.
Anybody have any questions on that? Hearing noted, is there a motion to approve the pest control policy?
I'll make that motion.
Todd makes that motion, and I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, second. All in favor of approving the pest control policy to the school board policy? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Go to item four, approval of the addition to the school board policy review and second audit of free and reduced lunch applications.
That's also a policy that we talked about last month, is an addition to school board policy. We'll bring it back to you this month.
Anybody have any questions on the free and reduced lunch audit? Hearing noted, is there a motion to approve the review and second audit of the school and reduced lunch policy?
I'll make that motion.
Ryan makes that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom seconds. All in favor of approving the review and second audit of the school, free and reduced lunch applications? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any other?
That's an old school move to new business.
We have with us tonight Brandon Feiger. Brandon's our project leadway teacher, and I think you want to talk to us a little bit about a couple of things, Brandon.
Chrissy's going to pass off to you just two things. One are the modules that we're going to do at Mentone and Akron this year. Each grade level, K through five, will get to do one engineering module and one computer science. And then she has another one that just, they're not the same, but it shows you the standards that Project Leadway, some of these modules will cover. They're not just your science standards. They're going to cover math, they're going to cover language arts, they're going to cover the new computer science standards. So we're really going to hit a lot with these kids. Project Leadway is going to allow them to really think outside the box and not me just teach them, you memorize it and spit it back. But here's the problem, how do we work together and solve it? They are going to become, excuse me, critical thinkers and engineers. I went this summer to South Bend for three days, and I didn't get to go through every module, but I got to go through one in kindergarten, third grade, fifth grade. They are really, really fun and really cool. I can't wait to see these kids in there and building and creating these things. K through two, yes, they're creating and they're solving problems. The bio-med one, which we are not doing with them, they have to design a cast, that's the big problem. A little girl falls off and she breaks her arm, and so you need to take these supplies and create a cast. And it can't just be pretty, it has to be waterproof and comfortable and all of these other criteria. The one we are going to do with kindergarten and first grade this year, we read The Three Little Pigs, and it's all about structure and function. So why would you want to build your, build your house this way? What's the function of it? And I actually got in my kit an air compressor to blow their houses down. It's really cool. And then at the end, the little girl wants a paintbrush that, she just gets tired of the same lines, and so she gets to create her own paintbrush that can do it all. And this is one we got to try, and they basically just set out a table of any craft supply you could think of, and you could use as much as you want, as little as you want. And so these kids actually put them together, dowel rods and styrofoam balls and feathers and pom poms and bubble wrap, anything you can think of, and then they actually get to paint with them and test them, and then they will share back if this really worked or I chose the feather because I thought it would leave feather prints, and really it just leaves a really thin line. So it's going to lead to some great discussions, some great teamwork. I brought with me here, this is a base model robot. Our fifth graders are actually going to build robots this year. And fifth grade will also get to have, we're going to have a robotics team at Akron and at Mentone. Not sure how many competitions yet we'll go to, just kind of depends on what's available in our area. But these go. And like I said, this is pretty basic. They will, they can add claws, they can add like scoops to them, all sorts of things. And it basically drives like a zero front lawn mower. So I've had a third grader put this one together, actually in about an hour, and he drove it all around the school. So nothing. The Tech Point grant allowed me to go again to a training in Loganport, I went. And it was all on this robot and the game itself that the robotics team will be competing with. When I thought, when I thought it was going, I thought it was just build a robot, and that is so not in my element, and to do what? And so they actually have this game, it's an eight-foot by four-foot area, and they explain that when we go to a competition around here, it's a team tournament. So even though Mentone and Akron are rivals, we could get paired up, and you're not rivals for the five minutes, you are on each other's team. And so I have some blue balls on my side that I need to get over to you, and you have some orange balls that you need to get over here, but that's just not it. We have to climb a bridge and stabilize ourselves. We have to be able to lift them and place them. So these kids are really going to push themselves and challenge each other. Our classes start Wednesday, and I've had already one entire class stop before recess, and that being the building project outside to see what was in my room. And I have multiple upper grades stop in and ask, and some third graders that are very upset because they won't see me until January. But the plan is I will be at Akron for nine weeks, come to Mentone, excuse me, Mentone, back to Akron and back to Mentone. So both elementaries, every student will get at least two modules.
Great.
So we'll see what battle bots.
I don't know.
Yeah, we have things to do.
Maybe not this year.
It was, the national championship was on ESPN a couple of weeks ago, I recorded it, and that's something, if you keep winning, you would be able to go to that.
And then Vex doesn't do like, it's not really battle bot type. They do a team, which is what I talked about, and then they can do a driver competition. So your kids can drive and try to beat the best time. And then they have a programming competition, so they can program it to set the remote down, walk away, and can it complete the task in the shortest amount of time. So this year I hope to do obviously the team one and the driver one, and we'll just kind of see how the kids take it, if they want to try the program.
There you go. I wish we had something like that.
That's what I said.
I'd like to take a.
Does Al boot in there? How many kids? We are up to 13. Hopefully Mentone will also receive a grant, and then we will have 14 kids. And I, the kids are recommended, one kid per four students. So we have about, I have enough right now to do both fifth grade classes at the same time without having to just be a whole three-man all-day class.
Great.
We need the force, is the force approval of the extra bike award to Project Leadway and Akron.
I'll make that motion.
No. Is there a second? Todd seconds the motion to approve the grant for the Tech Point grant. All in favor of approving the grant for the robotic kits? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good luck.
Yes.
We're waiting for battle bots. Item two, improve health insurance benefits for all full-time regular bus route drivers.
Just a little background here, about three years ago, the board voted to no longer provide health insurance to full-time bus route drivers hired after January the first of 2013. Those people were considered Class C drivers. They were then paid a daily rate of $20 more than the Class A drivers who received benefits, who were eligible for the same insurance, and that includes medical, dental, and vision. And they received those benefits at the same cost as full-time classified personnel. Now, due to the challenge of recruiting quality bus driving candidates, and it's not unique to Tepi Valley, everybody is having that challenge, the administration would recommend that we offer this benefit to our current Class C drivers and any new drivers that are hired from this point forward. Class C drivers that would choose to become a Class A driver would then see their daily rate of a Class A driver. The current value of our health insurance benefit for a family plan is $20,880. Single plan is $8,352, and the school corporation contributes about 75% of that cost. So we also then have high deductible health plans available at a lower cost. So the recommendation to the board is that our Class C full-time route drivers, as well as new drivers, be allowed to get our health insurance effectively.
Is there any questions for Mr. Boggs?
Yeah, Dave, I'd like to go ahead and just table this for this month and bring it back next month, just for further consideration, and, and all, all of us would be here to vote on this, this matter. Just red, table for this month and move it into next.
Todd makes a motion to table this for a month. Is there a second on this motion?
I'll second that. I'll second that.
All in favor of tabling this for another month? Signify by saying aye.
I'll...
I guess I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I talked to Stan. Stan's okay with it, so, I mean, but if you want his vote, then it's fine with me, too. Are we short of bus drivers now? Are we looking, I mean, do I still have to drive around?
We're good right now.
As we say, I talked to him last week and he said, right at this moment, we're okay.
He was driving today, was he? Was he? I haven't heard of him.
And I find when we wait a month, I think it's important that we get good bus drivers and we always used to have. When I first got on, we had to wait a month. People wanted to drive the bus full-time for us. The reason being was we had offered insurance. Every school in the area has put, signed up an ad to the paper needing bus drivers. So, I think it's a great thing to do. Plus, I mean, it's a very, we put a lot of responsibility on a bus driver. Hauling our kids around, being safe, driving in fog, snow. When I like down south when there's snow and road and cancel school, we keep going. I like to see good, quality drivers. All right, we'll table this. It will be on next month's agenda. Is there any other business? It's about our first day of school. How'd it go?
First day of school was great. You know, it's kinda different this year. You know, I try to relate and think about where I was my first day at high school. You can just see that look of sheer terror of, what am I gonna do? The bell just rang. You're gonna kick me out of school. No, you're gonna be okay. Just have a deep breath. But, yeah, we had school pictures today. A little bit different having them on the first day of school, but it was all right. Everybody got to their classes okay. Everybody was doing what they needed to do to get through today. Getting ready for the football game. Need to get a little bit more organized as far as cheerleading.
Are you in charge of that?
No. No. No, I will gladly give my opinion on some grounds. Like, wait, no, this is not a good idea if you're gonna get killed. I appreciate it. But, yeah, it'll be a good year. It'll be a good year.
Great. So, you're looking forward to your senior year then, right?
Yeah.
Good.
Gonna be a good one.
Enjoy it.
It's gonna be fast.
And then, what's your plans after school, do you know?
Definitely looking at Ball State.
So, you're gonna be that, next year, you'll be that freshman one, what the heck?
Yeah.
And then the teacher's gonna say, this is class such and such. And you're gonna say, wrong class. Been there.
Gotta go the other side of campus.
Yeah.
That's a much better school than Purdue, though.
Do we have another person coming?
We will next month.
Okay.
And I gotta get school started first.
I said, better to then identify that to go through an application.
Yeah. Awesome. I'll make sure I send regular messages. There you go. Actually, I set that up on my phone, this and regular messages. All right, hearing, nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all.